This meeting of the Reading Municipal Life Department Board of Commissioners is being recorded via Zoom for distribution to the community television stations in Reading, North Reading, Wilmington and Linfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items of the official agenda as well as items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Let's see, has Phil joined us yet?
I'm here, John. This is Phil, I'm here.
Oh, you are there, okay, good. Great, thank you. I didn't see you.
Dave is having trouble.
So, Phil will be the Board Secretary?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, excellent. So I'd like to move into, let's see, in terms of public comment, I'd like to limit any comments to about two minutes and I'll try to address, or we'll try to address Karen's questions, I haven't seen them yet, perhaps after we get through some of this agenda because we have a pretty full agenda tonight. So, let's perhaps start with the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board.
No, John, let me go first on the public comment. This is Phil. Yeah, I just want to recognize that Lori Kavanaugh, Kavanaugh passed away last week, longtime RMLD employee, and I'm sure that the whole Commission sends its condolences to the family and friends, okay?
Thank you, Phil. For the Citizens Advisory Board, George Hooper was supposed to be here tonight but he had another Zoom commitment, he does about 14 a day apparently, like the rest of us, so, but he apologized and the other CAB members were not able to attend either. So we'll try to give you, just try to give you some feedback on the CAB as well as, Colleen is on here as well, she could certainly augment that. It was a rather long meeting, about an hour or so. I think the, some of the key items were that the, all four towns have apparently approved the 10-year extensions. Three of the towns were just waiting for the certified letter to come in. The town of Linfield still apparently uses the town meeting to put the final stamp of approval, although the Board of Selectmen in Linfield approved it. And we're going to try to get that certification sooner if we can, otherwise we have to wait until June, I forget, I think it was June 12th, Colleen, correct me if I'm wrong? Colleen, are you muted?
I think he said June 20th, but I've already sent an email for clarification.
Ah, thank you. Okay, great. That's super. The other thing from the CAB, which we'll get into here in a few minutes, is that they did indeed vote on the suggest, both motions suggested for the payment to the town as stated on our agenda here tonight. Was there anything else, Colleen, that I missed? Oh, I guess there was one other item, and George Hooper did say that the, he had asked about the Board of Health relative to RMLD in terms of reopening. He had read through the RMLD's process for doing this and thought it was excellent and commended the RMLD for their procedures. If that's, if there's nothing more on the CAB, could we move on to the liaisons? And Vanessa, I believe that's you, and we'll certainly get to Karen's questions here in a minute as well.
Yeah, thanks, John, thanks for having me. I know that you have on the agenda tonight the payment discussion, so I just want to take a moment and thank all the Commissioners and RMLD staff who are working with the town to establish this new formula to the payment to the town of Reading. It's going to provide some nice stability and, most importantly, predictability for both RMLD and the town. And right now, especially as we're facing sort of greater financial uncertainty because of COVID-19, I think that's really going to be mutually beneficial. So, I just wanted to thank you all and say that I and the Board are looking forward to working with you on future initiatives.
Thank you very much, Vanessa. And Karen, if you're watching, we will try to get back to your questions here a little bit later in the agenda if you don't mind. Thank you. Any public comment tonight? If not, perhaps we could move on to the two motions for the payment to the town of Reading.
You ready for the first motion, Mr. Chair?
I am, thank you, Phil. Would you please do that?
Move that the current annual Town of Reading below-the-line payment of $2,480,506 be extended for payment dates of June 30, 2021, and December 31, 2021, in the amount of $1,240,253 each.
Did I get a second, please? Second discussion? The only comment I might make is this, because of COVID-19 and the other issues that may be surrounding this, I think this is an excellent idea and keeping the, certainly from a predictability perspective, it doesn't get much more predictable than you have the number right there in front of you, which is what it was in 2019. So, I do think this is an excellent idea and I'm, so if there's no other discussion on this particular motion, could we take a vote?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Head of CBI.
Mr. Stempak, aye.
Colter, aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the second portion of the motion, could, Phil, would you please do the honors for that?
Okay. Move that the annual Town of Reading below-the-line payment calculation continue as two half-payments on 6/30 and 12/31, and that of 3.875 mill per kilowatt sale of the previous three-year average of kilowatt sales from the audited financial statements, starting with the payment date 6/30/2020. 22.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, can I now?
Yes, go ahead, Phil.
Propose a substitute motion. Tracy, would you put the substitute motion up on the screen, please? So, let me read the substitute motion then, I'll explain it, and we can always have discussion on it. What I'm proposing to do is move that the annual Town of Reading below-the-line payment be set based on a calculation of, calculation formula of 3.875 mls per kilowatt hour multiplied by the average of the previous three years kilowatt sales from the three previous years' annual audited financial statement. Such payments to continue to be paid as of half-payments on June 30 and December 31 of each year. Such payments to commence on June 30, 2022. The annual result, the calculation formula will be annually presented to the RMLD's Board of Commissioners 60 days in advance of the June 30 payment. In the event of any catastrophic event or events as declared by the Department's General Manager, the RMLD's Board of Commission and the Department can adjust the payment to adjust the emergency. Catastrophic event or events will be defined by the General Manager of the RMLD. Hopefully somebody will second that for discussion purposes.
Second the motion, Colter.
Okay, it's been seconded. So let me explain what I'm trying to do here, okay? What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to be putting things up front at this point. And I'll go over each of the sentences that I've got in the motion. The first sentence is basically the same as the motion, the original motion. And basically what I've tried to do is I've tried to make the language a little bit clearer so that we actually talk about it being some sort of calculation formula. The second sentence is the exact same as the present motion, as is the third sentence. The fourth sentence is where now I've got difference. Under DPU ruling 85121, that took back in 1985 when I was on the Commission, the Commission has the full jurisdiction over the bottom line, the 8% return on commission. So what I'm proposing to do here is that it gets presented to us each year so we can review it and if need be adjusted maybe. I've been in favor before, but I don't think I had too many people jumping on the bandwagon with me on that one, so this is kind of, you know, it keeps in front of us each year so we know what it is. Now, the 60 days may be tight, originally it came with 90 days, but I'm not sure the audit may be done by that point, the December 31 audit, so I actually moved it, I took 60, you know, I'm open to suggestion on the number of days on that. The final one is basically I'm trying to put up front that if any event that takes place in the future, example, you know, the ice storm that took place out in the Worcester area just basically leveled the system. You know, I'm putting it up front that the intent is that if something catastrophic happens, you know, to any of the, and we need, you know, that basically the payment may get adjusted at that point to address the emergency at this point. And that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to put everything, I mean, there's no, in terms of the motion, and I've always thought about maybe doing this as a policy, there's been no force majeure, any power in this, and so that's what I'm kind of pre-grain here, is maybe some sort of force majeure and put it up front that if something catastrophe happens, that, you know, the payment could be adjusted. So, that's my reasoning as to what I'm proposing to do here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have a couple thoughts on it, if I may.
Please, go ahead.
So, I think, first of all, Phil, thank you for your thought. I know we're all, we've spent, you know, better part of three years in some way or another working on this and working hard to keep the magnitude of the payment as it's been, and also that we've done some recent changes to smooth it out, as John indicated earlier, the two motions, and then to have this be an average over three years to really minimize the potential for changes. So we put a lot of thought into it. The last part, taking the last part first, if I'm not mistaken, it's always been true that if there was a catastrophe, that all bets might be off, and this has been stated many times. Am I mistaken about that? Is this something that isn't now true? First of all, that's my.
My intent, Dave, is to actually put it into the motion so that there's no ambiguity going forward at this point.
Right. So, okay, so, but I think it's always been true, and as such, we don't need to vote to establish the reality of that. And if we do, it means, it sort of raises it like, oh, is this something that was in question before? So I don't think there's a need to vote this in. It also potentially creates a situation where people from other towns could say, hey, this is in the motion, and I think that this, what happened over the winter was an emergency. So I'm, I think the GM should declare an emergency and cut the payment. So I just think there's these risks of unintended consequences for the last part, and that there's no need to vote, it's always been true, so there's no need to vote on it. In a similar spirit, the first part of it, I think, no matter what, the payment is going to be clear at least 60 days, if not more, because anybody can look at audited financial sales and do the math, or just make a phone call to the GM if there's any dispute. I mean, to formalize this as a new step two months out, kind of guarantees this is going to become a potential political issue every year. And, you know, we've been through three years of this, we've established a very smooth formula, so I'm just worried again about we're creating new processes that aren't necessary. Now, if this had been on the agenda originally, you know, we've been working on this for three years, and we have a motion, we had formulas going back to January, and it's only on the dias here that we're changing it. I just, I understand the spirit of it, I'm glad we're discussing it and seconded it, but I just don't think we should do this.
Okay, I respect your opinion.
I think it should have been, if we were gonna, I think it should have been on the agenda the first time around, and there could have been a request to have it on an agenda in a timely manner.
Yeah, I'm curious, Phil, what's your, what's the magic of the 60, adding the 60 days? I'm just curious what your thinking was about that, based on what Dave's comments were, that it's calculated, it's automatic.
Right, but, you know, in the past, all we've seen is just a letter that goes out to the town. And I wanted, you know, each year to come in front of the, so it's actually on an agenda item on the Commission so that we see it each year, so we don't end up in the same situation where we are now. That's my feeling going forward.
When did the audit? All right. We have one person talking.
And it also could be that, it also could be that there maybe just be a temporary situation. You know, I thought about if the payment decreases and we determine it's a temporary situation, we may want to adjust the payment. So I'm kind of saying that maybe put it, bring it up and bring it up to the Board and actually have the Board look at it, so it actually is something we see each year.
Mr. Chair. Phil, if I may, just for a minute, I think we can do that anyway, and that's within our power, or which we've been charged to do. We get to see what the payment is on a periodic basis, we can ask for it anytime, and quite frankly, we could change it in an emergency anytime as well. So, I just think this is somewhat redundant myself, but other discussion, please?
Yeah, I just, if I may.
Please, go ahead.
When, Colleen, when would we have audited financial sales ready, or pretty much what we know are the sales?
Wendy, I mean, this year is a little odd, we're expecting them out in June, but typically, Wendy, correct me if I'm wrong, we usually have at least draft financials before the town meeting, which is in April, so.
So the numbers are going to be out there anyway, in April.
Yeah, there might be some slight reconciliations, accruals and stuff that happen with ISO and stuff right at the end of the year, but other than that, they should be available.
If I may continue then with my thought, it kind of comes back to that, this, you know, this isn't on the agenda, and I understand we can amend stuff, and that's fine, but I think the unintended potential result is that it becomes a political issue every year and doesn't need to. And I just, we've spent so much time trying to get this resolved, and so we can work on productive, constructive things to have this be like, let's chew on this for three months. We can do that anyway, people can come forward anyway and say, hey, you know, we should revisit that, but we don't need to formalize this and have it be in the motion, because we can do it anyway. But it just guarantees it's going to be a political thing every year, or it risks that. Sorry, that's.
I agree with you, Dave. You know, we've had so many discussions about this, we've found a model that really balances the needs of the town, the needs of all of our ratepayers, the Citizens Advisory Board, we've found something that everybody can live with, and it really reflects the fiscal health of RMLD going forward. That's how we calculate, and it can be, those audited financials are done, people will know what the next payment's going to be for the following year. So, I don't think we need to add this.
Is there any other discussion? Phil, would you like us to take a vote on this, or would you like to withdraw?
No, no, let me, let me do this. I did circulate this to all members two days in advance, so, you know, you've all had a chance to see it, it's not a surprise to you tonight. And I will, at this point, I appreciate the discussion, and I will withdraw my substitute motion at this point.
Thank you, Phil, I appreciate that. Could we go back to the original motion?
I do thank everybody for the discussion, though. I do thank everybody for their thoughtful discussion, quite truthfully. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Phil, and I just want to, since I was, I appreciate the spirit of it, I really do, and I think we all will do that anyway, so, anyway.
So could I have a, if there's no more discussion, could I ask for a vote on the original suggested motion, please?
We're voting on the original motion now?
Yes, the one that is listed in the, on the agenda.
Okay. Mr. Head of CBI.
Mr. Talbot, aye.
Mr. Stempak, aye.
Colter, aye.
Mr. Pacino abstained.
Okay, thank you. Let be shown that one abstention and abstain and four ayes, the motion has been passed. Oh, we finally have, how many years to take? And it will be a good thing. Oh, well, in any event, my opinion. Can we move on, please, to the General Managers' report?
Okay, yep, can you hear me? I'm just going to give a COVID update real quick. So, the RMLD has a comprehensive in, wait a second, I'll wait till Trace puts it up. That doesn't look right.
This is the one from SharePoint.
Oh. I don't know what happened to it, that's not the right one.
Okay, I'm going to stop Share and let me check.
That's an old one. Okay. Here, can I share?
Yeah, yeah, if you have it up. Sorry, I figured that was it.
No, it's okay. Sorry, guys. Can you see that? Can anybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. One second. Okay. So, the RMLD has a comprehensive infectious disease outbreak plan, EOP 20-03-HR, which we have been sharing with the Town's Incident Command as it's been updated. It's stamped a living document due to the regularity of updates as information is received, such as the Board of Health, the CDC, the Governor's Orders, et cetera. The Emergency Response Team, under another EOP 20-07 comprised of senior managers, has been meeting daily at 10:00 AM since March 3rd, working diligently to ensure that all matters of this COVID and its impact on the RMLD as an essential energy provider aligns with the employee and customer safety. Currently, the RMLD is in Section 6. I'm going to just put this down. The way this is set up in Section 2, because, you know, we want all of the employees to be able to see the information, is in Section 2. All these red that you see, when they click on that, Kathleen and Tracy had done a great job with, you can click on those links, it will take you to other emergency operating procedures that we have, or like, for like, the Governor's Orders or Board of Health Orders, they're all in sequential orders in those attachments. We go down to Section 6 here, which is the remobilization towards normal operations, and we're approaching back to Phase A. The ERT, or the Emergency Response Team, made some slight changes and immediate implementations to the procedure on Tuesday morning regarding the remobilization to align with the Governor's recent order that came out on Monday. Those slight modifications were related to office workers whose productivities at home had been successful, and we continue to allow them to work remote. We have received no word yet from the Town of Reading's Board of Health on the opening of 230 Y Street as a public building. Once the building is opened, we have put in place a lobby flow design with designated floor markings for up to five customers with masks. While this layout ensures proper distancing, the RMLD typically never really sees any more than two people in its lobby at any one time. The lobby bathroom will be closed and proper signage will be donned on the outside of the building. Public meetings such as this will continue virtually under the open meeting relief order that we received from the Governor, and will stay intact until it's rescinded or the state of emergency is ended. Public bid openings will continue as we have been doing virtually, as allowed by the AG's office. The outside use, meaning organizations that have insurance coverage under the Town of Reading for the use of our cafeteria, remains suspended until further notice. We will continue to monitor the orders as they come in and make adjustments to our living EOP document. The RMLD remains in full business and electric continuity, and I'm happy to report that everyone at the RMLD's diligent efforts in following our very strict safety protocols, which have been mandated and monitored in accordance with this emergency operating procedure, continues to result in no illnesses. We are grateful to all of our staff who have been working onsite and remote for this essential business, and especially during the past two storms we had since COVID. Once again, all of our customers were restored in record time compared to other communities. I want to thank the RMLD staff, I wish them continued health, as well as all of you and all of our customers. You're on mute, John.
I said, thank you very much, Colleen, I appreciate that. Chuck, could we move into the Integrated Resources, please?
Do you want to library check?
My library, to be exact. So, if we could get to the next slide, please, thank you. And, one more, please. So, most of the focus of this evening's report is going to be on where we stand a month and a half into the COVID event. I wanted to begin with the impact that we are seeing on our system loads. When we did a baseline assessment of the potential impacts, we started with an 8% loss of load and a corresponding loss of revenue. We now have the results of the first four months of the year. And what I put on this slide is, the blue line is actual monthly loads for 2019. The black line is the projected loads for 2020 that were used to establish both the wholesale and retail budgets. And the green line is our actual experience year-to-date for 2020. We are coming in below both the 2019 actual results and the 2020 forecasted loads for the first four months. For the first three months, we were not experiencing COVID-related activities of measurable significance. This difference is due primarily to abnormal weather conditions. It has been much warmer for the first three months than is normal. April's loads are below the forecasted amount, and this is likely due to COVID impacts. I have not been able to assess the magnitude of the below-expectation result. But if we go to the next slide, I can show you what we have seen for heating degree days for the year. This is the primary weather driver on our system right now. The top line is heating degree day averages for the first four months over a 15 or 20 year waiting period. The next line is the actual heating degree days that we experienced for January, February, March and April. And if you notice, January, February and March, our variance is that we were below normal. This indicates warmer than average and results in a reduction in load due to the lack of need for. due to, uh, the lack of need for, for heating. The variance as a percentage, uh, is 12, 5, and 14%. Notice that in April, uh, the heating degree day variance was actually, uh, cooler than normal. Uh, but you also notice that the heating degree days for April, uh, are half of what they are for January. So, the waiting effect in April is going to be much less. Uh, plus, uh, if there is any variance, uh, usually the, uh, thermal loading in the building, uh, does not change dramatically, uh, with the temperature. Like, it requires a more sustained, uh, temperature difference. And so you don't get quite the heating, uh, impacts that you do, uh, in April, uh, from, uh, heating degree day variance that you would, uh, in the middle of the winter. Um, I also added to this the, uh, heating degree days from last year. Uh, and you can see that, uh, last year was actually, uh, cooler than normal. And, uh, except in April, which was warmer than normal. Uh, and that was about 5% uh, over the first three months. So, uh, basically, uh, a big part of what we are seeing in our load variance is due to weather-related, uh, effects. And, uh, you're going to start, uh, being able to track the COVID impacts, uh, a little better, uh, with the May results that are coming in.
Chuck, if I may, uh, just a comment. I believe you had mentioned that, uh, January was the warmest on record. Is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, that is the, the warmest January, uh, for recorded weather history.
Our area then, Chuck?
I'm sorry?
For our area, presumably?
Yes. Now, I have looked at the NOAA, uh, expectations for the summer. And this is supposed to be an El Nino year. The, uh, jet stream is expected to stay, uh, well north of us, uh, actually up in Canada for most of the summer, which means that, uh, we are expecting a slightly above-average, um, temperature summer. So, warmer than, uh, usual.
So turn those air conditioners on, but shave the peak, right?
If we can do it. So, uh, next slide, please. Now we're starting to look at what our revenues are doing. Uh, the load's a pretty good indication, but, uh, the most important is dollars. How is what we're taking in shaping up? The black line is the revenues that we took in, in 2019. The blue line, uh, are the revenues that we are taking in, in 2020. Uh, they are below the 2019 results, but not the 8% that, uh, we were predict predicting as the potential for the COVID event. So we're going to keep monitoring it, but, um, it looks like, uh, at least the economy in the North Shore, uh, is still relatively strong. Uh, I don't have employment statistics, uh, for this area, but, uh, our revenues, uh, are holding up, uh, reasonably well, better than expected. So if we go to the next slide, now the question is, okay, uh, we're charging, uh, customers for the sales. Are the customers paying us? What are we seeing for money coming in? And to assess that, uh, I looked at the aging of accounts. Uh, this is six years of data. And, uh, if you look at the last two, uh, you'll notice that, uh, 2020, uh, we're actually, uh, doing better in the first 30 days, uh, than we were in the, uh, same period, uh, a year ago. And if you look, uh, at our results, uh, going out, uh, 31 to 60 and 60 and over, uh, you see that our results are comparable over the last couple of years, uh, in terms of, uh, receipt of money. So, uh, the short answer is, right now, uh, we're not seeing, uh, a difficult, uh, situation, uh, on the order of magnitude, uh, that we had originally established as a baseline. So, we're in better shape than expected. We're tracking, uh, all of these, uh, standards to see, uh, how we continue to perform. But right now, uh, it's not looking, uh, dire. So, uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is, uh, an analysis of, uh, the kilowatt-hours that we purchased by resource. And the one, uh, thing that I would note is that because our loads are down, uh, from, uh, what was, uh, projected, uh, we actually have, uh, sales back into, uh, the pool. That's the yellow, which is now below the line. So, uh, next, please. Changing gears, um, we're going to look at some of the retail activities that we're engaged in. Um, the question has been, what is, uh, the impact of electric vehicles on RMLD? So, uh, I've put together, uh, a little bit of detail, uh, to determine, uh, what EVs, uh, have the potential to do on our system and, uh, in order of magnitude, uh, impact assessment, if you will. So, what I was able...
You're frozen, Chuck.
Some of you froze, Chuck.
Uh, I'm sorry?
There you go, you're back. You had frozen for a minute.
Okay, it says my connection is unstable. I don't know whether that's the connection or me, but...
Wasn't warmer.
Uh, so for EVs that go 100 miles, uh, they're currently using about 34 kilowatt-hours. Um, that means that they use 2.94 miles per kilowatt-hour. Uh, if you want to do a gasoline equivalent, uh, a gallon of gas, uh, produces, uh, roughly the same result as 10 kilowatt-hours. So, uh, assumptions, um, we assumed that, uh, an electric vehicle in RMLD service territory is primarily used as a second vehicle, uh, back and forth, uh, to work. So we assume the commute of 27 miles each way, 54 miles round trip, five days a week, 45 weeks a year. Uh, that results in, uh, an annual, uh, vehicle usage of about 12,150 miles. At 2.94 miles per kilowatt-hour, that's 4,131 kilowatt-hours. And we assumed that 75% of those kilowatt-hours would be used at home. The other 25% would be recharge at work location, uh, or, uh, while out, uh, running errands, whatever. Um, but we, uh, derated the kilowatt-hour consumption, uh, a bit, just to be conservative. That gives us, uh, through, uh, an RMLD account of about 3,100 kilowatt-hours per year. Um, that is 260 kilowatt-hours a month. So, let's put this in perspective. Residential customers for RMLD use, on average, 750 kilowatt-hours a month, 9,000 kilowatt-hours a year. 3,100 kilowatt-hours a year, uh, added to that increases usage, uh, by 34% on average for a residential ratepayer who adds a second EV. Now, we believe that we have something on the order of 250 to 400 electric vehicles. We're working on, uh, tightening up, uh, those estimates and, uh, determining, uh, exactly what we have. Uh, we have Energy New England, uh, helping us through, uh, the Registry of Motor Vehicles. Uh, we are looking at data analytics to be able to see, uh, whether pattern recognition, uh, will help us identify electric vehicles. Uh, but for right now, uh, I use the lower end to be conservative. Uh, 250 electric vehicles at 3,100 kilowatt-hours per year. About 775,000, uh, kilowatt-hours attributable to electric vehicles.
That's right now, right?
Uses 700,000 megawatt-hours a year. If we wanted 1% of that consumption to be attributed to electric vehicles, uh, that would be 7 million kilowatt-hours for a total of 2,260 vehicles.
Well, that's, that's interesting. Um, because as I mentioned before, when one technology displaces another, and in this case, electric displacing internal combustion, uh, which is already, already happening, right? Volkswagen has already gone full-electric. Um, it, uh, is always a substitution curve. And what I mean by that is it's an S-shaped curve. So you start off very, very shallow in the curve in terms of adoption. Then all of a sudden, it rockets up, uh, to, you know, 70, 80%. And so the real question here becomes, when will that happen? Uh, and I think we've seen estimates, Chuck, if I'm wrong, somewhere between sort of five to maybe, uh, five to eight years out, whenever you really start feeling a fairly major impact. Unless, of course, all the automotive manufacturers switch to electric, which a significant number are already in process.
Well, um, yes, you, you're right. And what we're trying to do with our program, the incentives for chargers and, uh, the stations that we're trying to get out in commercial and, and public areas, is to move to the shorter end of that time horizon rather than the longer end. But we're just looking to, uh, development curve.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
So Chuck, are you saying, right now, you think 1% of load is from EVs?
No. What I'm saying is roughly a tenth of a percent of load is from EVs. We think we have about 250. Uh, 1% of the load would be 2,260.
Okay.
Right.
So what we're seeing right now is a tenth of a percent of our load from EVs.
And Chuck, the next question is of, as a follow-on, not for this meeting, but for a, a future meeting, will be, what if we actually hit that level, 1% or 2%? What does that mean in terms of load factor for our infrastructure? And, uh, what we need to do or start planning for that?
Well, um, uh, that's a very interesting question. Um, and there are sort of two pieces to that. Uh, as we move closer to our, uh, distribution substations, then the EVs typically charging at night will improve the system load factor. So, uh, we will get a more, uh, efficient and therefore economic use of our, uh, trunk distribution lines, our substations, et cetera. Where we run a potential risk, and this is something that we are watching very carefully, is when EVs charge, a Level 2 charger draws about 7 KW. Water heater draws four and a half. So this is a fairly intense load. A Level 3 charger, the Tesla Level 3 charger, can draw over 15 KW. Three times the draw of a, uh, water heater. So, what we are doing is monitoring, uh, charging profiles for customers, finding out when they charge. And in order not to have two or three Teslas in a neighborhood overload the distribution transformer in that neighborhood, we would look to schedule when people charge so that it's a more balanced, uh, charging load at the endpoints of the system or the distribution transformers, without impacting the efficiency, uh, of the use of the system and, and therefore the more cost-effective, uh, load that we have.
That, that sounds like a gr- a great idea. And, um, perhaps we could also think about if those customers who would like to do faster charging, would they pay for an upgrade? Would that be another revenue source for the RMLD?
That is possible, um...
Yeah, Chuck, you don't have to answer right here. I, I didn't mean, intend to, to prolong the discussion, but I would like to, those are sort of just some thoughts about, you know, we can discuss.
There, there are any number of options, uh, for ways to address this. Um, there are some other things that, uh, we're looking at factoring in. For example, uh, customers, uh, who have installed solar and have electric vehicles. If they have the opportunity to charge, uh, during the day, uh, then they would get more use out of the solar behind their own meter. Uh, and there wouldn't be as much, uh, transfer onto the system. So, uh, there, there are all kinds of interactive potentials for the, uh, components that we're putting onto the distribution system.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just one more quick question, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, Chuck, do you know of these 250 cars, how many of these people actually have what you're describing as a Level 2 at 7,000 watts? Do we know if any of them do?
Uh, most of them are Level 2s.
But I mean, Level 2 also means, um, 3,000 watts. It's referred to in multiple ways, but like, I'm gonna get a Level 2 and it's gonna be 30, 3,300 watts at my house. So, people use Level 2 and sometimes it means 33 and sometimes it means 7 or 66. So, I, I would say, cause I, I costed it out, that putting in a 7,000 watt, I have to change my panel. It would be thousands of dollars and I don't, I'll never need it. And I, I suspect a lot of people at best use the 33 cause you, you can get 100, 150 miles of range overnight with that or more. So, I just wonder if everybody is using the 7,000 right now.
John, can I say something?
Turn on mute, please go right ahead.
But Dave, we have a panel upgrade rebate for you.
I know, but it... I, I looked into it.
We, we thought of, we knew that was going to happen.
No, I know, but I looked into it, it's still, and I appreciate that and, and on behalf of all ratepayers. But, um, it, it still would cost me a lot and, and I, the bottom line is I don't need it. Like, my, our usage is even with the 3,300, we can get 150 miles of range overnight if, if our battery could even hold that, which it can't. So, I just think, I just, I, I suspect there won't be ma- many of these 7,000 watt ones put in cause the others are fine for, for home charging.
And every case is going to be an individual situation.
Correct.
You could take one of these 3,000, uh, KW, uh, chargers and put it into a house with 20 KW of air conditioning and electric water heater and other associated devices. And you're gonna get a 200 amp panel. So, each situation is somewhat case-specific.
Yep.
But, uh, we are looking, uh, to cover as broad a base of, uh, situations as we can with the programs.
Great. I just wonder if we can find out how many people are actually using the 7,000 watt chargers right now? Cause that would seem to be something you would notice as a load. You'd be able to see that. But I'm belaboring this. I'm just wondering, so at some point, it'd be good to know.
Can I say something? So, yeah, we can monitor the data analytics through the smart meters and we're also working with Energy New England to try to get, uh, data from the DMB or the RMB.
Yep.
Um, and, and get more specific data. I mean, right now, we have a list of everyone we've given rebates to and exactly, and they're on time of use. But to try to collect all that data, we gotta do it with, uh, with the analytics and, and with, with the, uh, registry of motor vehicles.
Uh, Colleen, just a, a side comment. I think we're working with one of the major, uh, charger manufacturers, right?
Well, we have ChargePoint. We have, uh, appointments to, to talk to just before COVID hit, uh, Volta, which is free electricity and basically signage boards on either side of that, that's their business model. They're also coming out with small mobile, I shouldn't say mobile, but compact chargers that could might even be able to be attached on telephone poles that would eliminate the need for any type of, you know, civil construction into the sidewalks and things like that. You can you can Google like the city of LA, they're putting them all over the place. So we're trying to build the infrastructure, some of like the ChargePoint ones have pretty significant, you know, years for payback. So especially with Volta, there'll be no capital money going out. So there's different business models that we're taking a look at about how to try to push push our rebates and push this infrastructure to be built.
Yeah, thank you. I was also referring to David's question about, you know, how do you find out this information? And sometimes if you just ask the vendors you're working with, because they tend to do very good competitive analysis of what's out there, who's using, doing what to whom. So it doesn't hurt just to ask the question and they may have already done the assessment. So and not not to not to do the other data analysis intensive, absolutely do that too. But I'm just saying that this is their business, their light blood. And just a simple request from them might prove approval, that's all.
I'm sorry, John, can you repeat that? Who am I going to ask? I missed the beginning.
Volta, let's say Volta is one of your, our vendors, right? And we're doing business with them in terms of potentially asking the senior management at Volta or the marketing, vice president of marketing, how many vehicles are there in our area using these chargers and of what type? And I'd be very surprised if they didn't have some analysis, which wasn't
They do, but you can't, I've already asked them, they can't focus on what's in our service territory, only what the usage is for whatever cars are coming from whatever area.
Okay.
I mean, but
Chuck, are you, you have a few more slides?
I I can go through them very quickly, but there was another hand up I saw.
I have, Bob, I had a question. Have you experienced any burnt up services yet due to the fact that someone's overcharging?
I have not.
No, we're we're monitoring them. And that's why if you're getting a rebate from us, we put you on time of use. And we're setting up the smart meters to monitor them. And the point of the the time of use, the whole design of that is that once we start sensing that there's some on the same transformer crib, that time of use incentive would even grow by saying, okay, Bob, you charge yours this time, Colleen, you charge at that time. And, you know, that's the whole design of it. But no, we haven't had any, any issues yet. We're trying to stay ahead of that, hopefully.
Okay, if there's no more questions on this, Chuck, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. We launched a number of efficiency programs earlier this year, and I just wanted to put some preliminary numbers for what we're seeing. This is as of a week ago. And we have three heat pump rebates. Actually, I was told we processed another one this morning. So we have four heat pump systems that have gone in in the last month, month and a half that have at least taken advantage of the rebate program. We are working with a company called Abode. They are experts at how to correctly size heat pump systems and how to right size customers' expectations for the systems. These are critical if we want customers to install the systems and be happy with them and tell all their neighbors how wonderful it is as opposed to complaining that the system doesn't keep them warm. It's using more energy, whatever. So we're working with these guys to make sure that our program gets launched correctly. We have two rebate applications for breaker panel upgrades. I am pretty sure at this point from the conversation that Dave Talbot is not one of them. And then we've started a yard equipment program. And at the time of the report, we had eight lawn mowers, four chainsaws, seven leaf blowers, a pressure washer, five string trimmers, two hedge
And a partridge in a pear tree.
So that's what I said earlier, you know, I feel like I'm singing the Christmas song. I was told as of this morning that we're over forty one electric lawn mowers on the system and growing. So this program got off to a faster start than we anticipated. So we're kind of pleased with how the the programs are going so far. And I believe last slide. Tracy? So the other program that we launched, Colleen's been talking to you and Hamed's presented that we have an outage management system that we're putting in place. That includes a customer notification component, and we've begun signing customers up for that. We launched this with a press release and a posting to the website on May eighth. On May eleventh, we emailed to over nineteen thousand customers. We had a fifty seven percent open rate on the initial emails and a fifteen and a half percent click rate. Those are both fairly good. Customer signups as of earlier this week were two hundred and seventy one. And we did have two issues. Some customers had difficulty identifying the discounted bill value to put in. So we put a Q and A together and posted that on the the website. The other issue we had is that the outbound emails, when they hit a Gmail account, were being treated as spam. They would be putting in the spam folder and the click on was disabled. So we've posted instructions for how customers can reverse that. We're getting signups from those customers now. And we're working with the bulk mailer to change the way those go out so that the Gmail junk mail is not triggered. So we're going to be following up with some more press releases, tweets. And we have a little print that goes on the back of the envelopes that are mailed out with everybody's bills. So we're keeping this in front of the customers. Looking for a good signup on the program.
Okay, thank you very much, Chuck. If there are no more questions, could we move on to Hamed, the engineering and operations report, please? Are you muted, Hamed?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, now we can hear you.
Sorry. Sometimes you have to hit it twice to make it work. Okay, I'm going to start with the projects that are either completed or underway. The first two projects that you see on this slide, these are the conversion areas, the areas that they're currently fed four point sixteen KB and now we converted them to thirteen eight KB or to be converted to thirteen eight KB, which is going to minimize the losses in overall. Basically, the first one is the conversion area is North Main Street, which involves the overhead construction of twenty six hundred second feet of the three phases space cable. And basically this area, we are waiting for Verizon to set three poles so we can start the completion of the conversion area. And they've been pretty cooperative with us in or into setting poles. And even during the COVID nineteen, which we do appreciate it. The conversion area two is the low street and this one involves both overhead and three underground risers. Basically, there are forty five poles that they need to be replaced. And Verizon has set seven of those and they're moving along. And hopefully after they complete the setting poles, then we're going to start the conversion in that area. So these are fairly large old section of Linfield that, you know, they've been fed five KB and we are wide step downs. And now we are upgrading everything from soup to nuts, basically. Next slide, please. The next slide is showing you, showing you the pictures on Linfield Center. That's the North Main Street area. And you see that, you know, the poles are set, the new poles and how old the the infrastructure right next to it is. So everything is going to be transferred. You see those large pine trees. You know, these are the ones that unfortunately there are threats to our distribution lines. But we live with them. We live with them. So the next slide, please. Okay, this one again shows the step down area conversions in the Dogwood Lane, Adams Street area, North Reading. Basically, three transformers involved and replaced. One more transformer is remained as soon as that one is replaced. Then what we're going to do, we're going to convert the area. And this is one transformer that the last one that we haven't been able to replace. It's because of the COVID nineteen, we didn't want to give outages to the people. Although we continued with our transformer maintenance program, but we only replaced the transformers that they did not require any outage. And that was bypassing and removing the old transformers. So this one, one transformer is left to do. And as soon as that's completed and replaced, then we're going to convert the area. The next one is the underground area upgrade in North Reading Green Briar Drive. It involves seven transformers that the two are already replaced and five more to go for the same reasons, we're waiting for better conditions, at least this school to be over with, so the people are home, still are working out of the home. And so we're waiting for a better time so we can, you know, arrange the outages and replace those five transformers and upgrade also the underground cable, what's sixteen hundred feet cable that needs to be upgraded. Then we can, you know, we can energize the area with the new underground system, which that area again, those areas are very, very old and they needed the attention. So the next slide, please. This one, the two jobs that they involved primary metering upgrade. This primary metering, basically they metered on the high voltage side, not the secondary metering like houses. Usually, usually they use for large establishments. And two primary metering that we did was Austin Prep in Reading that involved installing one pole, seventy five feet of overhead cable and then underground to the transformer. And because they're already, the other buildings or the entire campus was on primary metering. Now the new service that they wanted to the lower athletic field, also we decided so so that everything is everything is on primary metering. So we put this one, this service also on the primary metering, just to be, you know, consistent. This job is completed and was done actually a few weeks ago. The next one is a fourth hand road in Wilmington that they're trying to upgrade the electrical facilities in two buildings, buildings, the one one hundred and one ten. And we upgraded the overhead lines and installed primary metering. And that one was another job that was completed, successfully completed. So these two were done and completed. The next slide, please. The next slide is showing you the facilities projects, all these three projects, the parking lot, roof and deck is basically, it's almost completed. So the last asphalt topping, it's going to be done in the parking lot next week. And we are hoping that all of these projects, they're all going to be completed by June sixth. So these three projects are huge achievements after they're done by June sixth. No more leaks in the building, hopefully. So that should fix it.
Excellent.
The next one, these are the prior, the maintenance programs that, you know, you see, I'm not going to go over everyone. The only new one that we are going to start pretty soon, that's highlighted in yellow, that's primary metering testing. We've got approximately eighty five primary meters in the system. Some of them are really old, so we are going to test them to make sure that, you know, the revenues that we're getting, you know, these, the meters are measuring the the kilowatt hour sales accurately. So for meter accuracy, we are testing them and we are upgrading the PTs and CTs and any component that needs to be upgraded during this process. So this is another maintenance that it's going to be, get started pretty soon. We secure the contractor in order to do that, and that's going to start fairly soon. By June, it's going to start. So and I believe it's going to be completed by early July or maybe mid July. The next one. All right, these are the transformers that we replaced for past since January. Usually that number twenty three should be in the range of sixty to seventy. But we slowed down during the COVID nineteen since the late February for March and April. So these are the only transformers, like about twenty of them that we replaced. These are the ones that did not require giving customers an outage. These are the ones that we just installed them on new pole, we bypass and we remove the old transformers without customers experiencing any outages. As you could see that, you know, total transformers in the system as of yet, as of May twelve, we had the four thousand fifty five transformers. And the ones that, you know, they're targeted for a schedule to be replaced are those are the ones that, you know, twenty five years or older. And we got one thousand five hundred twenty eight of them or approximately thirty eight percent. This number is moving because, you know, this is a moving target. As we replacing some transformer, there's some others that they come in and become aged. So that's why you see that number. Most utilities, they are in the range of, you know, fifty to sixty percent. So this number for us is reasonable, but we could do better. So the more and more that we replace these transformers, the better and better reliability would be. But it doesn't mean they're going to fail right away. You know what I mean? These are the ones that, you know, over years, they've been loaded or aged and they're due for upgrades and we're getting to them. We've got a good program for, based on the age and the physical conditions and also the loading. These are the three contributing factors in order to determine which one got to be replaced next. So the next slide. These are basically the poles, the double poles conditions that in all four towns, what we have. And you see that, you know, in Linfield, we've got thirty six, North Reading, we've got four. Reading, we've got twenty three and Wilmington, we've got forty nine. These numbers, it might seem high like in other areas, but these are the areas that as we go through conversions and we are upgrading those old poles as well as the pole testing program that we do. And we do annually seven hundred of them, seven hundred to eight hundred of them. And the ones that they fail, we set poles. And what I say fail doesn't mean they're going to fall over. But these are the ones that the life or life of the pole has been, you know, cut down due to moisture or soil composition. So these are the ones that we schedule to get them and replace them and, you know, transfer our overhead facilities to the new ones. So the ones that you see, that means that, you know, basically we are doing very good by catching up to those old poles and replacing them and taking care of them as far as the maintenance concerned. So we, some of them we have to transfer, some of them we have to pull the butts out of the ground in the areas that we have the custodial of the poles, which is North Reading and half the Reading. And the other areas, you know, Wilmington and Linfield and half the Reading, that's Verizon custodial. So after everybody's transferred, they're going to pull the pole butt out of the ground. So that's the status of that. The next one, please. This one is new, I figured I'd give you a new demonstration of, you know, the reliability indices. These are the ones that we get out of the E reliability tracker that APPA, we send our outage data to APPA. And they compare with the utility size of our own, like about thirty thousand. They have a range from anywhere from twenty to fifty thousand. So we're right in the middle of the pack, almost. And then what they do, they see that, you know, how many utilities, I believe last year, they are almost forty, forty utilities. They participated. And then they compare them and they see that, you know, how, what the average is uh for the regional and the average for the national. So the national average is the blue line and the regional average is the green line. And as you see that uh across the board since two thousand fifteen, they've been doing really well. As a matter of fact, three years in a row, we got the reliability excellence certificate from APPA.
How many?
Two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, so.
It's working.
Thank you. Yeah, it does, and we're hoping that, you know, the system is getting better and better every day. And uh, but uh we are not done, so we're gonna do the best we can, try to keep it the way it is. The next one, please. So these are the causes of the outages. You see that, you know, the number of weather events have gone up. Uh, so as the trees uh and also the the uh animals and, you know, the the contacts that they they have. Uh, the equipments, however, you see that, you know, it's coming down and it's getting better. That shows that, you know, the reliability working, the the plans are working. But the trees, unfortunately, we are at the mercy of, you know, uh God and the weather. So uh during the inclement weather conditions, and you saw the on the picture that, you know, these large pine trees, when there's a storm, they've got shallow roots, and when they break and they're coming down, they they make serious damages. And this is, you know, the big problem for all the utilities across the nation. So, uh but we manage it. So, but so far, considering on the number of storms that we've done, we haven't done really, we've had, we haven't done really that bad. The next slide, please. So these are the three certificates that for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, we got uh from APPA, that they uh they gave us a good uh report that based on the reliability and the outage history that we've had. So uh, I hope you're hoping that, you know, we get that next year and the year after, and hopefully, you know, uh every year. Uh, I guess that concludes my report. If you have any questions, by all means, I would more than happy to answer them.
If there are no questions, could we move on to the um, oh, and by the way, congratulations on the the awards.
Thank you so much. And thank you, thank I thank the board for giving us the opportunity. So we can, you know, with all these bids that you approve and we get, we uh that's gonna be provide this opportunity to fix a lot of, lot of uh assets that they needed uh to be fixed, and they still need to be fixed. Thank you.
If you could move into the procurement request, so would you uh read the motions, please?
Very good. All right. Move to recommend the general manager through materials manager, purchase seven dual port wall mount electric, electric, electric charging stations from Lily Pad EV LLC, source well uh cooperative contract number oh five one oh one seven dash LPE for sixty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. I'm assuming that's no sense or one or point one cents.
No, there's no sense. There's not zero. The next page, if you see, that's zero, zero. No sense.
Yeah. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, and the RMLD's policy number nineteen.
Yeah, this is a chapter thirty B, which means it's gonna be awarded to the.
Second, second, second.
I'm sorry.
We have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Okay. All right, this is basically the chapter thirty B, which uh the, and the seven chargers, they go in there for analog. This is actually for the analog charger, chargers that, you know, we, we told them that we're gonna be installing for them. We sent a bid to four vendors, as you see, ChargePoint, Lily Pad, Zico Systems, and uh the Boston Charging Systems. And the lowest responsible and responsive bidder was Lily Pad for sixty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Are there any questions surrounding this? If not, could we uh vote, please?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Stempak, aye.
I would aye.
Mr. Colter, aye. Sorry, unmute. My turn.
Right. Okay, um.
The next one?
Next one, please, yes.
Move to recommend the general manager through materials manager, purchase VVO software for Sir Valent, hopefully I got that right, Technology Inc., for a hundred fifty-three dollars, eight hundred and ninety-three, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight B, and and RMLD policy number nine.
You have a second, please?
Sorry, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Uh, discussion?
Okay, the VVO Volt Var Optimization, this is a software that goes, one of the modules that goes with our surveillance system, SCADA system. Basically, what it is right now, because NIGL and ISO is requiring certain power factor bandwidth at Station Three and Station Four. So right now, during the peak time, what we do, we go around and turn these capacitors on. These capacitors, it's like the analogy that we always use beer and foam. So when the foam on the say, on the system goes up, we need to push it down, and the capacitors are the devices that they do that. Right now, during the peak, uh the summer peak, we go around and we do that manually. Some of them, we recently put them on the SCADA system, but we still, somebody needs to go and open, open, close, and open, and watch when the load goes up and when the load comes down during the light load conditions. What this system software does, automatically monitoring the load on the system, and it's gonna ride with the load. So it's gonna bring on the cap banks to push the foam down or bad power, power down, the Kvar, and then it's gonna shut them off during the light load at night, so we don't go to the leading power factor. So it's gonna write the power factor exactly where it needs to be, so we don't get fined from main NIGL and ISO. And uh, this is very helpful, helpful. Obviously, SCADA system, it's updated, upgraded, and ready to accept this. So this is another module that we need to add, and once all the cap banks, they're connected to this system, then it's gonna be automatically done. We don't have to go around and turn them on, off during the system. So because, you know, this is uh one of the systems that goes with the SCADA, and we're not gonna have any integration problem, uh you know, we, this is a sole source, which is the price of the hundred fifty, three thousand eight hundred ninety-three coated. Uh, it's a slightly a little bit over what the we had budgeted, but you know, these number hundred fifty thousand that we budgeted was the estimate that we got, so the actual price is three thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars over the budgeted amount.
Thank you. Is there uh more discussion on this? Would anybody have any questions?
Who who programs those for you?
Oh, these, they come in program, they're surveillance that does that.
They do it and and. Update?
I'm sorry?
Will they do updates as things change?
Yes, anytime, and that's a good thing about it, because, you know, our outage management system, it's a very good question. Our outage management system, our SCADA, and also this system, they're all using the same database. In other words, it's already the integration of these subsystems, it's not gonna be an issue. So when there is an update, they're automatically, when they push, it's gonna update all three systems.
Okay, so so they manage, they manage all the updates for.
They manage all the updates. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You are.
If there are no more questions, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Stempak, aye.
I would aye.
It's called a right.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I believe that handles the procurement request. Now, general discussion. Uh, the next RMLD board meetings, I believe we've got listed here Thursday, June eighteenth and Thursday, July sixteenth. Uh, do those fit into everyone's schedule?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. And for the next uh cab meeting, uh June, Bob, uh you're you're assigned to that, if that is okay?
That's okay.
Great. And July, it's uh myself. Um, and let's see, there were no um account payable or payroll questions, I don't believe. Were there, Tracy? No. Okay, good. So um I'd like to um suggest that we have a motion to move uh into executive session.
John, could I, could I interrupt for one second before you guys leave?
Oh, yes, please, go right ahead, Karen.
Sorry.
Karen, I'm sorry, you sent the whole list of questions and.
And these are like quick ones.
What's happening?
Yeah, these are quick questions. I don't want to keep you guys late.
Okay.
Uh, even, you know, I skipped the middle ones since you guys didn't even put those slides up, but I was just wondering, um, the status of the community solar project, you know, now that COVID has happened and screwed everything up, and then I guess I, I think I got my question answered about who are the chargers being purchased for and where they're being installed. So uh they're for analog devices and they'll be for the use for their employees only, or will they be public access?
Those are uh on their property, um and we, we will be, they're owned by us. It's um, yeah, it's uh, it's how we install uh certain, on certain properties for um how we charge. So it's their employees, but we, but but we're, it's our business, is the point.
Yeah, well, maybe um, well, maybe we could talk about something like that, whether we could do something like that for um your service territories, like for Reading or for the town at some point?
Yeah, we have um, we're, we're working on rebates, more rebates for commercial. We, as you know, we rolled out the residential. Um, and unfortunately, because a lot of the electric vehicle uh capacity size for construction didn't come in, uh it made it a little bit more difficult to send out a fleet program for uh municipals. But yeah, I mean, we have municipal programs, commercial programs uh on.
Chargers, right?
On install, on installed EVs, right, like who pays for what, who pays for the civil, that whole thing, but okay, we're gonna get into that detail another time, we can, we can chat.
Okay, and and what's going on with your community solar program?
I'm sorry, Chuck, I I actually, I sent Chuck your email with the questions on it. So Chuck, you wanna answer Karen's?
Uh, the answer, Karen, is that uh we are moving forward with the community solar. Uh, we had sent a letter around to uh the towns uh earlier this year uh asking uh them if they had uh any questions or or comments uh about our uh requests that we were sending out, and we haven't heard anything. I am sending a uh follow-up closure email tomorrow, and uh then we're gonna go ahead with uh publishing the RFI uh to uh move the community solar program forward. Uh, I would not anticipate uh any uh COVID nineteen uh impacts on this unless access to uh public facilities uh is closed for some period of time, and then that would be a delay rather than a cancellation.
Okay, so you, and I, and I saw the proposal and I saw the roofs. Colleen was kind enough to send me another copy, and I forwarded that on. Um, but you're saying you didn't hear from the town of Reading? One way or another.
We didn't hear from any of the four communities.
You know, interesting. Okay. All right, well, it's good to know that you're able to continue that program. Thank you very much.
Well, in fairness to the four communities, um they, they have had some other issues on their plates of late.
Really?
Yeah, surprise.
Can't imagine what that is, yeah.
Okay, well, again, I'll relay that that program is continuing because I I do think they'd want to take a look at it as soon as they get their heads above water. Okay, cool.
Phil, could we have a motion to move into executive session, please?
Ready? Okay. Find it. Move that the board go into executive session to consider the purchase of real property and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Mr. Stempak, aye.
I would aye.
Mr. Pacino, I I heard, we heard a second, I assume.
Oh, second? Second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, um, and Tracy, how do we do this? Uh, we leave this meeting, we go into a new one?
Yep.
Had you, had you sent us another email?
Yeah, I sent a separate Zoom invite.
You didn't, okay. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate all your participation tonight.
Thank you.